Um, this for our developer meeting, uh, develop developer interviews for the city owned property at one eight three seven Uno Perro Sarah Boulevard and I'll hand it over to Tatum.
Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the city council. Um, this is the meeting we've all been waiting for for some time. I'm sure we're all very excited about this evening. Um, as you may recall, the city released requests for proposals at the end of last year seeking development teams that were interested in developing um, city owned property at eighteen thirty seven Juniper Sarah Boulevard. Um, as you're all well aware, the property is owned for a hotel and we had had a previous proposal and had entered into an exclusive negotiating agreement with another developer. Unfortunately, uh, that project never came to fruition. So that is why we had to release the RFP last year. So we had released it and we had five development teams that were interested in developing the property. Uh, the, the council conducted interviews in February and March of this year. And through that interview process, the council narrowed it down from five development teams to three. And those three development teams were J M McLennan Development, L F George Properties Corporation and Phase Three Real Estate Partners Incorporated. And they are all with us this evening for a second round of interviews. They submitted a term sheet as requested at the end of the last round of interviews, which provided more detailed information about their proposals and the financing and their timelines. Um, all of their term sheets have been attached to the staff report. So hopefully the council had an opportunity to review those. Um, just a special note that L F George was asked to include some project renderings um, in the first interview and they did that and they included that as part of their uh, term sheet. Uh, to simplify things for the council, Cosmont prepared a matrix summarizing their responses to uh, the various questions on the term sheet. So you have a nice uh, matrix to compare the three proposals side by side. So hopefully you found that useful. I, I certainly did. Um, and that was also attached to your staff report. So you had an opportunity to take a look. Um, as I mentioned, there are three developers. Uh, the first one is uh, J M McLennan Development. Their proposal is a mixed use uh, hotel residential concept with a hundred and eighty hotel rooms, uh, forty studios that would have a flexible use and ten top floor condominium units, a thirty thousand square foot conference center and a thirty thousand square foot athletic club. Our second development team, L F George, uh, submitted a proposal for a three hundred unit residential building with twenty four affordable units for daily city employees and an additional twenty affordable units. This proposal includes an eight thousand square foot community center and ten ground floor uh, commercial spaces. And finally, our third proposal was a research and development office concept with two hundred and eleven square uh, feet of building area with a hundred and eighty six thousand square feet dedicated to research and development with a twenty five thousand square foot event center and a ninety one hundred square foot rooftop terrace and also a fitness center and cafe open to the public. So those are just the snapshot of the proposals. Um, but each developer has been um, allotted fifteen to twenty minutes this evening to provide you a presentation of their proposal. Uh, the actual proposal itself, maybe some details on their financing and timeline, but we did allow the developers to select the topics of their um, uh, presentations this evening. Uh, different from the fir- the first round of interviews, I think you all recall that staff prepared some structured questions that you were to ask each of the developers. This night is going to be uh, a little more fun for the council. You'll get to ask your own questions. So hopefully you've been thinking of some things that you think are uh, relative, relevant to the development and um, you'll be able to ask those questions. So with that, um, that's sort of the idea for this evening. Um, we expect about thirty to forty minutes for each developer, although it's, you know, a little more free form. So if it takes a little more or less time, that's, that's okay. There's no absolute schedule, but we anticipated thirty to forty minutes each. Um, it is not expected that the council's going to make a decision this evening. This is your opportunity to receive information. If you feel like you've received adequate information this evening, staff is anticipating putting this on the um, regular agenda for July twenty fifth, which would actually be a week from today for the council to deliberate. Um, maybe take public comment if we do have people who want to uh, show their support for certain developers. And then they, the council can then direct staff if they are ready to select, they can select that developer and then staff will work very closely uh, with the selected development team to prepare an exclusive negotiating agreement that staff would bring back to council in the next couple of months. So with that, um, we were anticipating that the order of the interviews would occur as they are listed in the staff report. Uh, with J M McLennan being first, L F George second and Phase Three being third. So that, um, we advised the uh, development teams that that would be the order. Um, so with that, um, I can pass it over to the council mayor to um, invite the presentations and interviews. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Tatum. Um, I always want to thank all the applicants that are in attendance and let's get this show on the road.
Uh, so I guess we're, we're up and, we're up and ready. Um, hello, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I, I'd like to start off with just a small procedural change, uh, if I may ask. Uh, right now we're set up for fifteen minutes of a presentation, fifteen minutes for Q and A. Uh, I would like to add a two minute period at the end uh, for each group, uh, but in the reverse order. I, I think it kind of levels the playing field. I think there's an advantage and disadvantage of going first. Uh, but at the end, if we could go last after we've heard everybody else too. Is that something that, Tatum, is that okay with you guys? Or I kind of throwing it out here at the last minute?
Um, well, this is the first time this issue's been raised, so I'm going to defer, uh, we did advise the applicants the order that they would be presenting when we sent out the invitations, but I will defer to the council and to them. If you'd like to select a different order, uh, draw numbers, that's fine too. There's no, there's no science behind uh, the order of the applicant. I think it was actually alphabetical.
Yeah, I, 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 I don't want to reinvent the wheel. I just think that it, it would be fair uh, at the end to just, you know, and again, two minutes for each group. Uh, if they want to do a summary, great. If they don't, uh, that's okay too, but just as long as we're, we're in the reverse order. Mr. Mayor, is that something?
I'm, I'm okay with that. Is my council, if my, my peers um, are agreeable to that? Is that okay with my?
I'm fine with it.
No objection.
All right, sounds good. We'll go ahead and do that. Glenn, are you okay with that?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm fine with it. I think uh, it's a good, it's a good, uh, it's a good thing to do and uh, hopefully the other uh, developers would be able to uh, accommodate as well, but I'm good.
Okay, thank you everyone.
Garrett, I appreciate that. Thank you. Appreciate. Uh, so what we're going to do, we're going to play our, run a video, um, uh, which is, you know, it basically does our project description, uh, along with our, uh, our key points and our term sheets. So it's our original video and then it, it addresses uh, five cards, uh, that will exp- uh, explain the term sheets. And then we'll, I'll go back live, uh, do a little bit of a recap. That shouldn't take the fifteen minutes uh, that were allotted, but uh, we'll, we'll go from there. So I'm going to run the video now. Thanks.
My family dating back to the nineteen fifties has a history of operating hotels in the Bay Area. I have deep roots here. I was raised here. I went to high school here. I started my business here and I have a strong connection with this community.
I've known Bob for almost forty years. He's been extremely committed to Daily City, not only having his business here for quite some time, but also employing a lot of the residents of Daily City. He supports the high schools, he supports the local nonprofits in the area and he's, and he's always involved in what's going on in Daily City. Bob is a very sharp entrepreneur, someone that we can turn to to actually make this development happen.
Our proposal at eighteen thirty seven Juniper Sarah will include two hundred and thirty residential and hotel units, a thirty one thousand square foot conference center and a thirty three thousand square foot athletic club. Our development will establish a great base of income for the city.
Our proposal is the best solution for this site. It combines lodging, health club, meeting and conference space on an excellent site centrally located in the Bay Area and accessible to the BART network.
In our development, the housing component is going to have a variable of short term and long term rentals. Either one of those is going to provide income to the city of Daily City.
This hybrid model is a perfect fit with this site. It not only capitalizes on the obvious lodging demand that emanates from the airport and the city along the BART line, but it also captures a very valuable component of residential development. That development combined with that hotel demand provide a very financeable project and be very attractive in the marketplace.
Because of the site, the building has angles to it, so we've taken that into account and used it to create a stunning building. Because the site is open all around and there's actually a sort of a park behind it, you'll have light from all directions coming in. The views toward the ocean will exist once you get above about the third story, so you'll have excellent views.
Likely the top three floors will be the residential component. Those residents will enjoy all the services associated with being in a hotel in terms of getting maid service, food and beverage delivery, parking, et cetera. Meanwhile, the lower floors will house a select service hotel.
The health club is exactly what this place needs. We need opportunities and places to go where we can not only work out, but meet friends socially and also recreationally.
Our health club provides an anchor tenant that's been in business since nineteen seventy nine. Seventy percent of our members come from the city of Daily City. Taking care of our health and our mental health especially, uh, getting to an athletic club is really, really important.
Another component of this development is a business and event center. This is going to be a major component of the entire development that will drive not only hotel business, but also afford the city of Daily City the opportunity to hold gatherings and events here, which have been so direly missed for many, many years.
I've always felt that the city of Daily City needs an event center to house small and large events. Being on the BART line makes us an absolute perfect location.
This development is a great opportunity for our community here in Daily City. Bob is the right person to get this project done. I can't think of something more exciting than what we're trying to build here.
We're locally sourcing everything. We'll all be union labor. It'll be lots of jobs. Daily City will be proud of, of having all this work show up in this area.
I really want to do this project. I have witnessed over the past twenty years, all the approvals and none of them have come through. We've got skin in the game. We're coming up with two hundred and fifty thousand dollar deposit with benchmarks and I really look forward to working with the city. Dear Mr. Mayor and members of the council, all of you have our term sheet, which provides you with the details of our project. I would like to go over the five key points of our term sheet. They are the initial deposit and our due diligence, our labor commitment, the project description, which includes the hybrid hotel and the residential components, our event center and the benefits to the community. As I have stated from the beginning, we will have skin in the game from the start. We will deposit two hundred and fifty thousand dollars at the issuance of the E R N. This will give us a ten month window to negotiate our term. If we need another ninety day extension, we're willing to put up another fifty thousand dollars. At the end of our term, the deposit will become nonrefundable or we will withdraw from the project. As we have indicated throughout our previous presentations, we are stating publicly that this project will be constructed with one hundred percent union labor. Most of the new structure will be devoted to developing approximately two hundred and thirty total rooms and suites, of which approximately a hundred and eighty will be devoted to the guest hotel use and will be operated under a national brand likely Hilton or Marriott. Approximately forty studios on the upper floors will be available for short term or extended stay and apartment rentals. Ten of the top floor units will be for sale condominiums to raise capital for previous reimbursements. All two hundred and thirty units of the development will be fully furnished and uniformly designed. The residential users will have access to the hotel services, including optional housekeeping and the athletic club. This exciting event center will provide the city with a venue on the BART line that is unmatched in the Bay Area for its accessibility and location. This will create a downtown feel for all of Daily City. Approximately thirty thousand square feet will be devoted to a multifunctional center. The center will accommodate groups of up to three thousand people for music and art events, meetings, conventions, social gatherings, banquets and trade shows. The space will be flexible and be configured to accommodate many groups' needs. Our center at thirty thousand square feet is compared to the Fox Theater at twenty thousand square feet, the Fillmore Center at thirty thousand square feet, the Masonic Center at thirty one thousand square feet, Bill Graham Auditorium thirty one thousand feet and the Orpheum Theater at twenty four thousand feet. As you can see, our event center will be a major player in the Bay Area. As a late submittal, I'm providing the council with a letter from Live Nation, the largest event promoter in the world, indicating their interest in scheduling events at our Daily City location. With their involvement, this will create a destination unmatched in all of Daily City and the surrounding areas. Direct city benefits in regards to revenue is one million seven hundred thousand dollars to the general fund. This is made up of the T O T tax at one million three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, apartment in lieu fee at twenty four thousand, the event center at fifty thousand, ticket sales from events at seventy five thousand and business license at two hundred and nine thousand. With our hotel, athletic club and a major event center, I can't think of any development that will create the excitement and prestige that this project will provide.
Okay, we're back. Can everyone hear me okay? I'm, I'm, uh, yeah, I was going to give you my cell number. If, uh, if you can't hear me, text me. I don't know if that's okay or not. I know Tatum's laughing over there, but uh, this is, this is, Zoom is not my, not my forte, so. Um, so when we submitted the project, I wanted to make sure we could build it. Uh, and a hotel only project would be pretty tou- pretty tough to pencil out. My light just took a dive here, so uh, it'd be hard to pencil out. So as in our submittal, we submitted a mixed use project with, which includes our hotel flex unit arrangements, uh, the athletic club, which by the way has a forty year history in Daily City and an event center. With what started out to be a conference center turned into an event center, I'm going to name drop a little bit here, so I do apologize. Uh, but as you're aware, I'm a car guy. I'm, I'm a hot rod guy. In our circle of hot rodders, there are two well-known musi- musicians, Jeff Beck and Eric Clapton, both hot rod collectors and builders, uh, with some of our companies here in, uh, in, in South San Francisco. Um, we reached out to, uh, to them to, you know, see if we had a contact at Jeff, at, at Live Nation, uh, which spoke to their events. Well, this turned out to be the kind of a aha moment, uh, for all of us. Uh, I was put in touch with the special persons, uh, with the, excuse me, with the person with, uh, in charge of special projects for the, for Live Nation in their LA office. And as they indicated, there hasn't been a new event center built in the Bay Area in over twenty five years. They also brought up, uh, there are zero centers on the BART line. So with the help of our musician friends, they're more than ready to be a part of our project. Uh, as a special bonus, uh, which we found out a few days ago that Jeff Heller, our designer, has been doing all of Live Nation's, uh, design work for the last twenty five years. So the event center, uh, in this, with this, eh, with this size and magnitude uh, is a game changer as far as I'm concerned with this, with this project. I mean, to be able to have something this size in Daily City and to have Live Nation book events there, uh, I think is, I think it's incredible. So we're really looking forward to, um, to working with them. Um, then the next phase of my presentation is, is basically a comparison and, you know, all three applicants uh, have the ability to produce their product, uh, their projects. All three have past successes. But since this is a competition, I'm, I'm going to compare our ownership and our project to theirs. Uh, this isn't meant to disrespect them one way or the other. Absolutely not. That's not me. Uh, all this is, is me doing a, just a comparison of, uh, of, of the project. So, so number one, we're providing the city, as you, you've seen in the, uh, with the comparison that the consultant did, with one point seven million dollars in annual, uh, payments to the city. Uh, Phase Three is at one million and the, uh, the, what is the name of George's, uh, the daily views, uh, is at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually. Uh, number two, we're flattered uh, that both groups, uh, are now installing health clubs and event centers in their, in their, uh, plans. Um, the Phase Three group is offering a health club and a cafe open to the public. Um, I just have to say that, uh, I was the designer and operator of the Genentech Health Club, uh, their first one out in, out in South San Francisco, you know, ten years ago. And I can tell you from a life science standpoint, there's no way that that health club is going to be open to the public. Uh, the life science group, they absolutely do not want their employees commingling with the outside. And, you know, if, uh, Genentech is any indicator, that's, that's probably going to be the case as it, uh, as it develops. Um, the Phase Three group, it's big, it's impressive, uh, no doubt. Um, but like with most of the life science developers, um, they're in it for the five year cycle. Uh, the two buildings that are off of highway one oh one, uh, two beautiful buildings, uh, one that they purchased, the other they built. Um, that was five years ago and they sold them last year. And I'm pretty sure that's what's going to happen here, right? And, and, and again, and they are more than impressive as far as their ability to build, build the product, but uh, that's not what we're about. Uh, I've been here in Daily City for all my life. I have supported Daily City. Uh, this is a big project. There's, there's no doubt. Uh, but when you add all the components, uh, of, of what we're putting into the project, it's financeable because, well, number one, the, you know, the health club is, is is within the top twenty Planet Fitnesses in the nation. Uh, it gives us the cash flow to make things pencil out. Uh, a hotel only site, as I have said from the beginning, it's, it's a tough, tough call, but because we can add the athletic club, now the the huge event center, uh, the, uh, the financeability, the, the operational portion of this, it's going to work. And I'm behind it. I'm here. I will be here in five years, God willing. Uh, but this is who you get and, and I'm certainly um, you know, open to, you know, as far as, uh, you know, when we, if we are ordered E R N, you know, th- th- this is something that means a lot to, to us and, and to, uh, and to get the, get the project approved. Um, in regards to the overall projects, uh, if you go ahead with the life science, you're going to have a pretty docile, uh, passive uh, structure there that will have some incredible people working in and out of there as as far as, uh, you know, the, the life science, you know, demographic. Um, but it's really passive. Uh, with our project, it's exciting, it's active. There's going to be people in and out of it all day long. It's going to help all of the existing, uh, you know, restaurants and other, you know, from the movie theater to the Japanese restaurant to the pizza place, uh, to the the brew place, uh, down the street. It, it's going to benefit all of those. You bring in with the event center, three thousand people coming through there, right? It's on the BART line. It, it will allow all of the Bay Area, uh, to get there. Uh, and which isn't part of the, uh, the comparison that the consultant group, uh, put together. Uh, in that, you know, we by far absolutely will generate more income to businesses within Daily City than any of these other projects. So, you know, I'm biased. I'm, 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 I'm excited about it. I I feel that it's a benefit to the community. Um, and, and, you know, I, I, I think that we're the, we're the best, uh, the best option, uh, that's, that's been presented. Um, I'm sure there's, there's more that I've, I've written down here and I'm trying to, to read and look at the screen and all these other things, but it's, uh, it's, uh, it's what we have. So, so I'm open for questions. Uh, start from there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. McLennan.
Do I?
Go ahead, Jess. I got it.
Thank, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, uh, for your presentation, um, Mr. McLennan. Um, you know, one question I'm, I'm going to ask and, um, and is in regards to local hire. I know that you've talked about it as a business owner, um, but I, I, for me, it's, it's so important to also ensure, as you mentioned, having the op- uh, opportunity for, uh, locals, uh, to, to get into jobs. Um, will your Will your development have a strategy to hire locally?
Is this question regarding construction or operations?
It would be for, I noticed that you did talk about the local trades, which is wonderful. It would be for both, both in the construction, which is, I see that you've committed to union labor there. And so also operationally, like what would be your strategy in regards to local hires?
So currently, we have a little over 100 current employees that are working between the fitness center, our physical therapy, and our spas. I looked yesterday, and out of those 186 of them live in Daily City. So we hire locally. Now, I will admit that we don't intentionally go out and solicit Daily City residents for employment. But because we have such a large penetration within Daily City regarding our membership, we naturally just get a ton of applicants that are from Daily City. I graduated from Westmore, 1972, right? I'm aging myself here. And I always ask the kids, you know, or our employees, you know, where they're going to school. Most of them, Jeff, most of them, San Francisco State, City College. But it's, you know, because I'm here and I'm hands-on, which we will be with this location, the Daily City resident will always have a soft spot. In regards to the construction, as far as hiring the Daily City residents, there are vehicles out there that other cities have used. San Francisco, I know, you know, if they have a project in one particular area, they'll go ahead and, you know, allocate X amount of jobs for that. And I'm certainly open to that. I think it's fair, and it's, you know, it's the right thing to do.
Thank you so much. And in regards to the construction, and you talked about a union support for the building of the project, can you elaborate on that portion of it? Is it on what part of the building? Is it during the horizontal, vertical, or are you looking at working with the trades in totality with all the different trades?
Yes, so we're going to go to the Semitole Trades Council. And basically, we, possibly for next week, they'll give us their support because we have gone to them. It's expensive, right? And so this is an expensive project, but the quality of work using union labor, especially with the hotel and the event center, it's the way to go. So I can't see us wavering at all regarding the union help.
Thank you, and this will be the same question I probably will ask everyone. And lastly, in operations, are you looking towards seeing if there's any support to have operations within the realm of, you know, if, are you operating it? Or who will be actually the, who's going to be the owner to facilitate the hotel?
Yeah, so we'll have a flag. So there'll either be most likely a Marriott or a and there are so many variables in San Francisco, six years, up to six years ago, on Lombard Street with my family. And 100% of them were union labor. So again, we're not going to waiver. There's, believe me, the job market right now is just insane. Trying to find people from an athletic club to a restaurant to a hotel is horrible. So union help is definitely in our sights.
Thank you, Mr. McLennan, for that direct answer in regards to unions, union labor, or the openness to work with unions in regards to the operations piece of the hotel. So, you know, that was pretty direct there, and I appreciate you answering the question. Thank you very much.
Mayor, I don't have a
I see you.
I don't know why this computer doesn't have
I was waiting for councilman.
I'm sorry.
Jessica, are you finished?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate you. Those were the questions I had. Appreciate the answers, Mr. McLennan, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm done. Thanks.
Okay, go ahead, Pam.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. McLennan, for the great presentation. I do have a couple of questions, and it's kind of like on the same realm, but a little bit differently. And I know that, I thank you for your commitment, for the labor. And I may want to suggest that you reach out, his name is Bart, for our new buildings and trade as well. And he's our new guy for Semitole. And also to Juan over at Carpenter's 217. And also, if you're thinking of the operations, you can contact Cynthia, and I think I can give it to Tatum, and she can give you, Cynthia at Unite Local 2. And what that is, is the, if you're willing to accept a check neutrality. I know you're familiar with hotels, and it just gives them the right to organize without any interference from management. Mr. McLennan, I'm sure you're familiar with that as well. And then also, they have a, it's a community, one of the biggest community benefits, as you know, because you're involved in the community, is like you were speaking of, is when you were talking about the local hire. And the unions usually dish that out as they go, that's part of their procedure in labor. So they make sure, as you know, that they get those local people to those jobs as well, based on your history, Mr. McLennan. And it's called a community benefit, Community Workforce Agreement. So I'm sure that they'll explain it to you. And what that is, is it explains the benefits, as you already mentioned, which you already know the language from your family, on time, the quality of work, which saves money. And it may pencil out, and you think in the long run, it's gonna cost more, but actually it outweighs more than it does than if you would have delays in construction. So you're someone that's very familiar with background in that. So if you're willing to reach out to those parties and maybe partially discuss that, that would be great. And I'd like to hear your feedback on the possibility of at least having that open discussion.
So, okay, here's, this is Bob. The housekeepers, the maintenance people, the front desk people, that's, that's the core of the workforce as far as I'm concerned, right? We need to take care of those people. You know, I complain about the cost of living here and our, you know, nationwide, our, you know, we just, San Francisco's just went up to $17 an hour. And all of our Daily City employees, we pass that on. So they're at 17. The reality is you're hiring, you know, $18 to $20 an hour. But my soft spot is taking care of those people, right? And so I am absolutely, it's tough, right? You get the Marriotts and the Hiltons, and the last thing they want us to hear about is union representation. But that's gonna be part of our deal, right? And so as far as sitting down with them, absolutely, you know, that's us. You know, that's the, the McLennan-Dilla family has always been, you know, soft on the, I shouldn't say soft, but just, it's a part in our heart that we take care of those people.
Yeah, so yeah, thank you for making that commitment. That's really important. I saw that in your beginning when you first described the part about labor. So I really appreciate that. The only other question that I have would be, is when you do the event center, and as we know, we have partial agreement, it's my understanding, of some of the parking for the event center. Like if we draw a big crowd and what have you, I know there's gonna be an outreach to the local neighborhoods around the area. So I know that you'll make sure that it's insular and that be respectful that there's a neighborhood directly behind it. So I'm sure there'll be an outreach in that magnitude, and that the buildings will support making sure that that will be a low, I would say, noise level, and it wouldn't interfere with the neighborhood behind it. If anything, then we give them an opportunity to come over and not interfere. Because you know how the location is right.
Why, I don't know if it's
I froze.
What should we do? Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
We hear you.
It's like we lost him.
I defer to the mayor. We can come back or?
Yeah, I know that we have some, we allocated time for each group. I just want to maybe, let me think here. Maybe for my colleagues, if you could just hold up some questions. Would it be fair to just go ahead and go to the next presenter? What do you think, Taylor?
Yeah, I think, were there any additional council questions we could identify?
Mr. McLennan just came on.
Oh, great.
I had some questions.
Okay. Mr. McLennan, can you hear us?
It looks like we lost him again. Oh wait, no, there he is.
Yeah.
See? Very good. If you could finish your thought, and then I know our vice mayor has a question as well.
Okay, I'm sorry for this. I'm, I may go on to my cellphone here in a second if it continues to freeze, so. Okay, I'm ready.
So I know Councilmember D. Giovanni had a question about sound, insulating sound in parking, and I think that was the last.
For the, thank you, correct. That was the last one, because of the neighborhood directly behind it.
Right, and so during construction, obviously, there'll be a, you know, whatever mechanisms we need to use, especially for those, I think there's what, 15 houses back there that we need to protect. And we'll meet with them prior to construction. We will absolutely give ourselves, you know, from cell phones, you know, here at the Planet Fitness in Daily City. So we'll definitely handle that.
Thank you, and thank you for meeting with the community. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna try to be consistent as well in my questions for everyone. Thank you.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Pam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hello, Bob. Good evening to you, and thank you for coming on here this evening. I have several questions, and I'm just gonna throw it out there so I don't have to just keep asking back and forth, and you can maybe think about some of the answers. So the first question is, so you've mentioned at least a couple of times how having a hotel-only site doesn't pencil out. I'm wondering if you can explain that a little bit further? Because after all, we did zone this for a hotel. And the whole impetus was for the TOT tax and for us to get as much revenue as we can for the city of Daily City. And so I guess I want more of an understanding is why didn't you go 100% hotel? And why do you think it is a, it doesn't pencil out for your company? The second question is, has to do with the event center and the gym. I think it was Akeem that you pointed out that, at least for the third developer, that the gym really wouldn't be utilized by the public because it really would be the gym being utilized by the employees. So how do you think that would work out when it comes to a gym that is basically housed for the hotel guests and the guests of the, or the owners of the condo with respect to who's really gonna utilize that gym? And knowing that you also have a Planet Fitness down the street, and you also have a 24-hour fitness down the other street on John Daly Boulevard. So I'm interested in learning why you think that would be a different, it would be a different scenario from your gym and the way the public would use it. And then the third question I have was regarding the event center, which is, I think, really needed in terms of the revenue and the attraction and the ability to, you know, put Daily City on the map per se. But I also wonder with respect to how committed we can be to allow, like nonprofits, to be able to utilize that center, not just for money-making opportunities, but for causes, nonprofits in particular, that are impactful and meaningful to the community. And then my fourth question has to do with what is your commitment to affordable housing? Now, I know we only have a limited number of housing there. In particular, you have 10 condos. And what is your commitment, understanding we have a housing ordinance, but what is your commitment beyond that? Or what are you willing to do for people who live on the margins and they can't really afford what I imagine is gonna be a way above-market kind of rate? And then my final question is regarding the parking plan. And if you could elaborate further on, not the construction parking plan, but the actual tenants, guests, visitors, and how you think you're able to manage a parking plan that will be more efficient and acceptable to the community. Those are my questions. Thank you.
We lost him, Mr. Mayor.
I know you said you was trying to call in.
Okay. Now, okay, geez, I'm sorry, you guys. Okay. Councilman, so I got, I got the four. So why not hotel-only, the gym question, the event center, and then my, let's see here, my feelings regarding affordable housing. So first off
Parking plan.
I didn't get the parking plan. Sorry.
Yeah, my question on the parking was not just the parking for the, during construction, but what is your parking plan when it comes to the actual residents, the guests, the visitors, people who are gonna be at your event center for large gatherings? People who are going to be at your event center for large gatherings. What's the plan in place, uh, for that?
Got it. Okay. Okay. I'll start off with the, the hotel only. Um, we, a- a- as evidenced by the non-hotel on the site so far, uh, that a hotel only, uh, just isn't, i- it's, as, as a consultant said, it's a, it's a spillover, uh, for the city of San Francisco. Uh, and the, and the peninsula in between the airport. There isn't anyone that's going to come to Daly City to seek out a specific hotel room. So for that reason, uh, it's, it's pretty tough, again, to get it to, to pencil out. The occupancy would be, would be, uh, pretty sporadic. So by, I've always felt that by adding, uh, a residential component, the athletic club, basically if you owned and you financed the hotel free and clear, uh, you could then get it to, to pencil out. So with that, uh, we then, uh, through Bob Eaton, who is also online here, a, the flex unit, uh, has been tried, uh, successfully in different parts of the U S where instead of just being a strict hotel unit, it's a flex unit. So all of, every room will have a kitchen, every hotel room, every hotel, uh, unit will have a kitchen and kitchenette in it. So that if the hotel market is weak, you can go ahead and, uh, and rent it out on a monthly basis. Uh, it, it, it just depends, right? Today, the hotel market is not good. Uh, and the R and D, uh, is good. But as we all know, during the dot com era, you know, the R and D and the dot com part of the world was a train wreck and the hotels were, were starting to, uh, they came back and, you know, that was wonderful. I mean, we had some of the best years we've ever, ever had in, in the city. So my feeling has always been, and Tatum can attest to this, uh, that a hotel only on this site is, is a tough one. A mixed use, especially with the event center, I think is a, is an absolute winner. Um, in regards to the gym, what I was saying was, is that in the phase three, they have the, uh, the athletic club, the, the health center. It will, my personal feeling, and I'm sure we'll hear later on, uh, is that the health club portion will end up being for employees only. Uh, and that was the life science kind of, if you go to South City now, all of those buildings have fitness centers, uh, for their employees and they, they don't allow non-employees, uh, to, to use it. So, um, so that's that component. As far as the competition in Daly City, we are moving the existing Planet Fitness, uh, from down the street up to this location. So we will not be competing, um, against ourselves. Uh, the other clubs in the area, we feel that, uh, with our price point, our judgment-free zone, uh, the $10 membership, uh, is made for San Mateo, for, for North County. Uh, our membership, as I said before, 85% of our members come from Daly City. Uh, and we pride ourselves in the diversity, uh, of our membership. And again, if the economy continues to go, uh, the way that it's going, the $10 membership, uh, we've, uh, it's, it's, it's going to stay. It's going to be a strong point. Um, so that's in regards to the gym. Uh, the event center, uh, it will be able to be cut up into a hundred square foot unit or a 3,000 person event center. Uh, it will be mobile. It'll be versatile. It'll have a huge kitchen in it. Uh, we're not going to have a, a daily cafe, uh, but it definitely will have the, uh, the ability for, you know, the small Holy Angels, uh, fair group or fundraisers. Um, you know what I'm about regarding the local fundraisers. Uh, I don't think we can do crazy about cars in the event center, but, uh, you know, all the planning meetings and so forth will definitely be, uh, able to use. And again, this is Bob running this. This isn't, you know, the big real estate developer, uh, you know, from, uh, from down, down, down south. This is, uh, now, obviously that can always change, but, um, my intent is to always, uh, to always back and to promote, uh, the local, the local groups as much as possible. I know the movie theater at one time, you know, it was open for events, uh, but I know when I was on the chamber board that, uh, we just couldn't, uh, we, we could never make that work, but I guarantee you that, that part's going to work here. Uh, as far as affordable housing, I did, I have not addressed it, but obviously there are certain formulas that we would, uh, that, 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 the certain templates that we would, uh, put into our program. Uh, I am absolutely a fan of it. I saw that Daly City this morning opened up the, uh, the units for the teachers, which I think is absolutely wonderful. A great job, you guys. Uh, and we need, we need more of that. Uh, our first responders, our teachers, um, you know, everyone that, um, i- it's, it's tough. Northern California is, you know, for, for our wages. Um, you know, I, I, it, it's a tough one. So I'm here to support that as much as we can. Um, in regards to the, the parking plan, so the, the way that the, uh, parking places are allocated at this point, uh, it's set up for the hotel. Uh, the event center will be through the hotel, the fitness center through the hotel. Everything will be through the hotel as far as the allotted spaces, um, as far as all of the extra units. Um, we have underground parking, uh, set up, uh, and the 600 spaces that are allotted, uh, to this site. Um, so we're certainly, um, you know, sensitive to the, the local parking overflow, especially when we have events. But as Live Nation has said, you guys, this thing being on the Bart line is an absolute game changer for, uh, you know, for that. So again, it's, this site is going to be an active site, not a passive site. Uh, it's, it's not going to be, when you drive by, just this shiny box, uh, in the corner, you know, over there. So, um, there was something else I was going to say, but I don't have it right now. So I hope that answers your questions, right?
Um, Glenn, I would like to open up. You have any questions? Um, Councilmember Sylvester?
Uh, no, Mayor, I'm withholding, um, my, um, comments because I'm still gathering them and, uh, I can, I can say that I appreciate the presentation thus far, Mr. McClellan. I've, uh, a part that I've never forgotten since your first presentation was the concept of flex units and that they would have a kitchen. I never forgot that. And the new development of, uh, Live Nation. I'm very familiar with Live Nation. And post-COVID, they're starting to move back up and, uh, that's good information to know. So thank you.
All right. So with that, I'm, I'm going to hold my, um, comments and questions to the following. Um, I know, um, we have two other presenters. So we'll go ahead and have, uh, the next one. LF George Properties Corporation?
Because I got my finger.
All right. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Hello, I'm Albert Costa, um, agent and architect for LF George. Thanks for having us back here again. Uh, let's see, let's just jump right into it and, um, I'm going to talk for a little while and then, and then hand it over, uh, to, uh, another, uh, member of the team, but I'll take the lead right here. Let's see. Okay. All right. So this project, this proposed project is basically a, a non-hotel, uh, project. It's a non-hotel, um, proposal. It's all residential. And these are, this is, uh, the project is depicting 300 residential units. Both, uh, both of these residential, uh, towers that you see on the screen are 12 stories. There are 60 BMR, uh, units proposed, uh, with special allocations to first responders, teachers, firefighters, um, et cetera. The, uh, the unique, uh, part about this project is that in this, in this, uh, in this project, we wanted to provide a, uh, sort of a, uh, ownership of a pride, a pride of ownership by having residential units where there would be a community, uh, yeah, built here. And in thus, we have, um, we've, uh, have a community center, meeting rooms, lounges. We have open space. Uh, we've, uh, left the corner. We've got nice light and air around the, around the project. And we have, uh, onsite park for the entire project. It's all below grade, right below the grade. There's a active, uh, rooftop and, uh, I just wanted to say that again. I mean, the, the community part about this is that we, we expect this, uh, with the lower level being, uh, all commercial and then the residential units above, that it would be an active site, sort of an extension of, of down the street as, as new people would be living here and there would be, um, uh, a wealth of activity, uh, with, uh, especially with the ground floor, uh, commercial. So in that ground floor commercial, although we don't know what it is, it could be little restaurants. It could be just little, um, it could be a little shop of some kind. And so this, this combined with the, uh, onsite community center and the, and the active meeting rooms and lounges and we, there's a ballroom up in the second floor, um, event space. And again, we're, we're trying to create, uh, circulation around all the buildings and then a central island with a, a shared, a shared space. There's, um, also going to be an activity health center, um, and, and with a commercial core grounding this project. Let's see. The, uh, here is the ground floor. You can see the ground floor on the screen right here and there's, um, this is the main, there, there are entries to the residential units, but there's also, uh, these um, commercial opportunities with, um, full parking, commercial parking as well as residential park, both on top of this grade and then down below. Um, these are just typical floor plans. These are showing some of the typical floor plans of the second floor, the ballroom, the community center, as well as typical floor plans, um, of the units. And then this is, uh, another typical floor plan, um, depicting the units, the residential units with full kitchens. So that's it. I mean, basically, I'm going to, I am just going to keep it short and ju- jump to the questions, uh, later. But I wanted to, uh, introduce Gerald Green, uh, part of our, uh, team to explain the, uh, uh, our worksheet and, and so Gerald, are you there?
Thank you. Thank you, Albert. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, as Albert has said, my name is Gerald Green. Uh, I'm here on behalf of George, speaking on his behalf. He's a little uncomfortable speaking, uh, in front of a computer. Uh, and I think what we'd like to do is simply speak to the key elements of the terms that were presented to the staff, uh, back in April. We'd like to leave as much time as possible, uh, for questions. Uh, first of all, one of the key elements of LF George's proposal is that, uh, we're offering $4 million for the site. We would provide a down payment, uh, upon, uh, agreement that LF George is the appropriate developer. The balance of the $4 million would then be provided, uh, prior to the issuance of a building permit. We would also be prepared to provide, uh, some funds, uh, upon entitlement of the site. Obviously, another key element of our proposal as our project architect has communicated is that the proposal is a housing-focused project. We are not including a hotel in this project. It's still a mixed-use project. But again, that mixed use is primarily focused on the 10,000 square feet of, of commercial space that we believe will be much easier for us to, to operate. As you heard with the last speaker, creating a housing, uh, excuse me, a hotel-only project is a difficult task to take on. LF George Properties is currently, uh, moving forward with a proposal, uh, in Daly City, which they were awarded to carry out a development of a hotel. And through that experience, George is finding out that it is very difficult to finance a hotel project. It's also very difficult to, uh, work with an operator, uh, with the time constraints, the, the labor negotiations and what have you. They have to be involved in that. It's a much more difficult charge to create a hotel project only. LF George Properties is proposing a project which they're familiar with, which they're experienced with, and which they feel very capable of carrying out. That project does generate benefits for the city. Uh, while there are jobs that are created, they're not on the level, obviously, of a hotel, uh, but taxes are generated, uh, from this project as well. It includes 8,000 square feet of space that's going to be devoted primarily to, to the community, which doesn't exist at this space. And most importantly, this project provides the 15% of affordable units that the Daly, uh, Daly City zoning ordinance expects. And a key element of that is that 25% of those units will be set aside, uh, for workforce, uh, individuals within the city, police, fire, teachers. The other, uh, 20% of those units will be made available to low-income, uh, units as, uh, as required by the, uh, city's inclusionary housing requirement. There's also, uh, open space which can be devoted to community use as well in the minute, in the, at the ground floor, in the new landscaped areas. While this project does set up a debate between hotels versus housing, I think it is important to recognize that housing near Bart is a much more efficient way of moving people around and is much more, I think, desirable, uh, than having commercial next to Bart only. Adding housing to this site will support the other uses in the other phases of this project as well. Uh, and so we believe that this project is supportive and is very much related and connected. With that, I think that we want to open it up for discussions and questions and what have you. We recognize this is a different project than proposed, than expected, and that there are going to be some questions, uh, about the deal, about the terms. And I think we would rather leave some time for that. So with that, unless you want to add anything more, George or Albert, we'd like to then turn it back over to, uh, you staff so that, uh, we can hear from the, uh, council. And thank you.
Thank you. So, um, we'll open it up to, uh, my colleagues on council. Any questions? Go ahead, Justin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, and, uh, thank you to Mr. Costa and also Mr. Green and Mr. Lamb for your presentation this evening. Um, you know, one question I do have was around, um, the, 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 the construction. Um, I, I asked a question earlier around, uh, union labor being used for this project. And then also wanted to know, um, uh, around, uh, have you thought about the tiers of affordability? In regards to the below-market rates, um, uh, that is go- going to be, I think you, as you mentioned, 15%. So first and foremost, I know this doesn't have a hotel component. And so, uh, I think the question for me around union labor would be around the construction aspect of it. Um, and w- will you be hiring, uh, union labor for the construction piece? And then number two, the, uh, you know, the 15% below-market rate units. And then number two, the uh, you know, the fifteen percent below market rate units. Have you thought about, um, I know there's workforce housing there and then also um, for those that are most in need. So I was just wondering what income levels you see as um, you uh, configure. Your plan in regards to the affordable housing or below market rate piece. Thank you, those are my only two questions, thanks.
Counselwoman, let me try to respond to those questions, first of all. I want to clarify, earlier I think I said twenty-five percent of the units would be for workforce and twenty percent of the units would be for low income. And, and, and the terms essentially included twenty-five units. Set aside for uh, Daly City employees and twenty units set aside uh, for low income, so I want to clarify that. And I believe that what we're prepared to do is to work within the provisions of the Daly City zoning ordinance, which I think does. Set aside some uh, uh, provide some of those income levels, I think George is willing to work with, with uh, with those. Levels, am I correct, George?
Yeah.
With regard to the uh, labor market, as you heard in the previous presentation. Labor obviously increases the cost, but we understand the city's commitment to, to the labor market and we are willing to work with them. George is willing to provide um, as much labor uh. Jobs within the construction part of this project as possible, I think we're talking about somewhere around forty percent uh, of the jobs. Were likely to be available for labor. And prevailing wages for the entirely of the jobs after that.
Thank you um, so much for that clarification and so what I hear is that there is going to be. Uh, workforce housing for those that either um, work, work in, in Daly City and then. The other component would be um, uh, a set aside for the below market rate program, so. It would be a total of, was it forty-five units you mentioned?
Yes, that's the total.
Okay, uh, thank you, uh, really appreciate that clarification and then also in regards to um, the union labor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Manalo, uh, Councilmember DiGiovanni.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, thank you also, Mr. Costa and your partners and Mr. Lamb. Uh, for keeping always an interest in Daly City and your presentation as well, it's, it's great that you at least gave us schematics this time. Which gave us a better idea of what your project is, which as you said is a different project from each one as we look at it. So I just want to keep it kind of consistent to be fair to each um, applicant. Based on the um, I remember in the term sheets. Um, that I went over that also I heard the commitment to, as um, Mr. Manalo. Um, referred to, to the prevailing wage. And when there's a commitment to labor, um, is there a commitment to um, meeting with. Our Bart from Building and Trades and to, and our carpenters two one seven and Labor Council. Uh, to sit down and so you can hear the benefits of what we consider or I consider a community benefit. It's, it's called a community workforce agreement. It's similar to the, which I'm sure you are with the language of a, of another project like, but it's, it's termed a little differently. And just to sit down with them at least and listen to them and, because sometimes I think the parties don't get an opportunity. And usually it's the penciling out and the, through the cost, but the benefit is a real community benefit because it is a local hire. And especially going through COVID, um, even if these people are in trades, they need jobs. And they will direct those local people to, to the, your site and that is a big benefit. And they'll be able to keep the roofs over their head in our community and not have to move out. That's one of the things and they're always on time, as you know, and that, so if um. If there is any kind of commitment to speaking to uh, the Sematell Labor. Buildings and Trade, um, his name is Bart and the um, and Juan is the carpenters and our labor council. To have a conversation. Because that's, that's a um, were a big consideration for me. Because if it's a stall in a co- project, then that means it's less money for us. When there's a stall in a project and usually when you have labor, union labor. You can almost, they're always on time and that is when we're gonna get our revenue, the faster we get it built. So um, and I'm sure for the same, for the benefits of all of you, so that's. What I'm asking, so would Mr. Costa, would you be the one to answer that or?
Yes, uh, yeah, I think, I think so, as an agent for LF George, I would say yes, absolutely, absolutely would like to meet with uh, Bart.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Costa, thank you, Mr. Lamb and thank you for the other gentleman to try to help, I know he doesn't like to. It's like you said, speak Zoom, but I wanted to acknowledge Mr. Lamb, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions from my colleague, um, Councilmember Glens about?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, um. I, I didn't have any questions on the last go around with the first presenter because I believe all my questions were answered. Um, based upon the fact that my colleagues put out some questions and all my questions were answered. What wasn't answered, or I needed more clarification on this. Uh, Mr. Green, you had indicated fifteen percent of the total project which amounts to forty-five units. Would be split uh, between um, uh, public service like police, fire. Teachers. And then you also indicate the other ones would be available for affordability. Would um, Mr. Lamb be amenable? To moving some of those units or increasing uh, instead of uh, to public safety, I, I mean. I, 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 I want, I, I want it to be filled up. And uh, if you uh, have in, in your term sheet that just, oh, well you have to be public safety. And or police or fire, but there may not be any folks who may want to avail themselves of those units. And I'm looking for a mechanism to fill these units, either providing more to the community. Do you think uh, Mr. Lamb would be uh, amenable to that?
Yeah, yes, yes, we, we, we would, we would be prepared to work with some language that would broaden. Uh, the. If you will, but I think that, that we're simply trying to, to, to reach a specific. Niche group individuals that are impacted, who may not fall in the income levels that. Councilwoman Manalo spoke to earlier, so you know, we can use other terms, workforce housing, public, yes, the answer is yes.
Okay, great, and my next question is, uh, so these are not going to be rentals based upon. Uh, the information I received, these are going to be ownership units, in other words, folks would buy into the units and they would own them.
I think uh, at this stage, we can tell you that there will be a condominium map placed on the properties. And as we move further, uh, if we're awarded the opportunity to go forward. Uh, we still will have to consider whether these projects, whether it be rental. Or for sale or maybe a mixture of both, we will certainly be working that out. Prior to going forward with a building permit, but there will be a condominium map. That will uh, be placed on the property so that it allows the, the future flexibility.
Uh, great, so given that answer, if it's a rental, we'll try to keep the same percentages in affordability. As well, if it's rentals.
We, we are, we are going to be using as our guidance the city's uh, inclusionary ordinance. Um, so the, yes, we will, we, we're, we're prepared, whether those units are rental or for sale, the same number will be made available.
Gotcha, and when we talk about the city uh, inclusionary ordinance. Uh, hopefully, I'm hoping that that's up for negotiation because you're offering fifteen percent right now. So I, I guess we'll have to see if it pencils out, maybe, maybe uh, you know, w- we'd ask for more. So I just thought I'd put that out there. Okay, thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Spencer, Councilmember um, DiGiovanni.
Yeah, just one more que- Mr. Costa, Mr. Green and Mr. Lamb, um, when we penciled out, when we looked at the term sheets. Would you, would you mind reviewing uh, or giving us a little bit more about the anticipated, like the revenue, the fiscal. Uh, impact for the, for our city based on your project? When I was reading.
The fiscal revenue?
Yes, yes, please. I think I saw down here.
I don't have that, Gerald.
I believe that there is a, a sheet, it's um. And it is uh, just before the plans.
Right.
Economic value. I, I think um. What's being pointed out, what's being pointed out here is that there is some revenue that is generated. From housing. Uh, obviously, there's a much more uh. Taxable income, if you will, that's generated from a hotel, but we simply wanted to provide. The information that additional housing does have some benefits as well. And I think this information is trying to communicate uh, what's generated in terms of the annual return, it talks about the direct return to the city of Daly City for each of the housing units. Is approximately twenty-five thousand dollars in the form of local sales taxes, property taxes uh, and revenue. Um, and, and of course, there's also, uh, and I, I hope what's included in that is the sales taxes generated. From the retail businesses uh, that are in this uh, project as well. Uh, of course, it doesn't generate the uh, hotel taxes. Uh, but again, i- it's a different form of taxes, if these are condominiums, clearly there will be. Uh, property taxes and there will be sales taxes that comes about as we solve.
Right, because I was looking at your, the pie chart. And um, even though I had my glasses on at the time. Um, I believe that's on page thirty-six, I think, of, of, of the report.
It's F, I think it is, yeah, at the bottom, yeah.
Yes, but thank you. Correct, thank you very much, I appreciate it, thank you, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Are there any other uh, comments or questions from my colleagues before we move on to? Phase three?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, could you maybe also put down that uh, or take away that chart in front of me? Because it's. Is that, there you go, much better, thank you. No problem, um. Okay, well, I wanted to ask more about that, the, the revenue situation. Um, I'm not sure if Mr. Costa or Mr. Green wants to address this, but the. Our, our consultant put together a comparison and. In their comparison, um. Under uh, number five, co- co- community and economic benefits. Um, your competitors, the, the McLennan Development and the Phase Three Real Estate Partners. Are uh, valuing their um, project to at least be a million dollars or more. Uh, to the city of Daly City. And what I see in the valuation of this project is. Uh, two hundred and. What is it, two hundred and seventy-five, two hundred and seventy thousand annual, although it does uh, show some indirect. Uh, jobs and tax spending from residents and, and, and the affordable housing component, but. In terms of concrete numbers. You know, because I'm looking at your competitors and I see them giving a million or more. Are you, are you able to also say? That what this project will generate for re- for Daly City. Is at least equivalent to a million in, in, in all the. The, the categories you listed under the comparison.
Uh, we can buy this project for. Uh, four million, it's a, it's a possible cost of escape, so we'll pay for the, for, for million for the city.
I, I think what George is saying is that he's, he's offering the additional. Revenue that you're referring to in the sales price.
I see, no, I understood that. Um, but my, my, because you know, I'm just looking, trying to look at this in terms of objectively and. And the goal of this entire. Uh, project was to generate revenue for the city. And so I'm looking at it in terms of how can I best serve my city? In getting the best bang for my buck. Uh, in terms of the, what the future is for Daly City, because I see concrete numbers from McLennan in Phase Three. Uh, in, in, in one point three and one point one respectively. But the, the two hundred and seventy on LF George Properties. Is just that number and then we're left to sort of um, speculate. As to what the other numbers are with regarding to, with regard to the other. Sub, subsections of their uh, plan, so that's, that's what I'm interested in is I, I want to know in terms of. What Daly City is gonna get, how they're gonna benefit, how much you think we're gonna be able to have in revenue? If, should we decide to move your project forward?
Yeah, I'm not so, uh, Councilmember, I, I, as the architect, I don't know that uh. We know that exact number of the exact revenue, Gerald, we didn't, did we? Have a calculation of that, I mean, there was a lot that we, there was a, that we didn't know about, right?
We, we, uh, our numbers really are uh, more in our opinion and estimate, we believe in them though, they are real, we don't. Believe that there um, is any speculation in those numbers, we want to be real, I, I. You know, you, you've heard in the first presentation, I'm here, you're sure you're gonna hear about. Things in the next presentation that I think are, are impacted by market conditions. And, and it may be questionable whether or not the forecasts that are provided. Are, are gonna be able to reach those numbers, we don't know what's going to be the case once these projects are constructed, we know what the case is now and so we believe in our numbers.
Okay, and then let me ask you about the um. Uh, and I'm just, you know, I, we, we've already had the discussion about why we couldn't do a hotel from the other developer, a hundred percent. If you could, if you could share with me again, why you, y- your thoughts on why you don't think we can do a. A full one hundred percent hotel and why you think having residential entirely really sort of um, is the right. Uh, project for this particular spot?
Well, right now, the, you know, the. Bay area, the hotel, more than seventy-five percent of vacant, they cannot rent out. And the hotel lost money. This is, I would have seen this, but more important, all the citizens, they'll need a residential. A lot of the people, they not have a special for leave. So at least they send the, we need a. Change a little bit, not only for the hotel, should it say the residential, depending the market, depending on all the. Situation, city, the situation.
Councilman, as, as I, as I alluded to in, in my uh, presentation. LF George Properties is currently uh, trying to implement a project which was awarded to them by the city on Ceramonte at uh, five ninety-five Ceramonte. Uh, and through that experience, George is finding out that it's, that there are difficulties in financing projects. That include uh, ventures or commercial uses that still require participation. Uh, George has to go out and find uh, someone to operate the hotel, that's another contract that has to be negotiated. Uh, and uh, that's gonna be subject to, to totally different conditions, if you will, totally different values. The hotel operators want to control the number of rooms that they get involved in. Uh, and, and, and so we ultimately believe that. The complexity of negotiating a deal with others as well as finding financing that will allow this project to pencil out. Uh, really um, is right now something that will make it difficult for us to meet the time constraints. That the city is deserving of putting on a development of this nature. Uh, we have a lot of unknowns that have to happen in negotiations, but we also will have. Time constraints that we have to meet, time goals that we're gonna have to meet with the city. And w- 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 we find it very difficult to try to do all of that. And to continue to make the project economically viable.
Okay. Thank you, that's all my questions.
Are there any other comments or questions from council? All right, seeing none, let's go ahead on to uh, phase three. All right, seeing none, let's go ahead on to phase three.
You guys hear me okay? Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm Mike Garrity, President of Phase Three Real Estate Partners. Unfortunately, I've come to you tonight with unfortunate news that we're going to be withdrawing our proposal. It's not really the result that our team wanted is the culmination of the better part of the last year, but it's the right decision in this moment in history. We felt it was best that we shared this with you in person. We're convinced that this location would generate significant interest by research and development companies based on the early activity we have at the building just a few doors down the street. The problem isn't about this site or Daly City. It's that the volatility and certainty that exists in this moment in history makes it very difficult and almost impossible for us to commit to terms and to ensure that this project would be developed in the near future. Inflation continues to drive our construction costs to a level where new construction is very difficult. This is in addition to costs from both our investors and our lenders nearly doubling since the beginning of the year. The combination of this plus an early, early signs of recession across most industries means it's just the right decision not to consider a project like this. Luckily, you have a number, you have a few other qualified developers who have interesting plans for the site. We do not want to contribute to the history of such a great site sitting empty. We wanted to thank you for being a great place to do business. We've thoroughly enjoyed our time working with staff down the street and will continue to look for opportunities to expand research and development in Daly City in the future. You have a great combination of transportation amenities and community that we think make it very attractive. We apologize. We don't have better news. We wish you success with the site and wisdom in your decision. We'll continue to monitor the progress. And as neighbors down the street, we're excited to see what comes and will be available if something should change. With that, thank you again, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, but I wish I had better news, but wanted to share this with you in person.
Thank you, Mr. Garrity, for coming like virtually face to face and relating, relaying the news to us. I'll open up to the council if y'all have any comments. Councilwoman DeJivani.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Garrity, for coming to us in person. Yeah, because I was thinking about it because you guys just finished the other project was almost done, not done yet. And that how that would have fit. And if you're saying that it's not economically feasible at this time, please keep Daly City in mind. You know, for, for future projects or whatever, and thank everyone for even coming forth and being of great interest for us. Because we have limited spaces, as you know, for biotech. And like you said, just keep monitoring and, and keep us in mind and be staying in touch with Tatum. And you know, our great staff, so we appreciate everything and look forward to the other project, which will be done, should be finished soon, correctly. Mr. Jerry?
Yeah, I'd be happy, I'd be happy if anyone would like to come walk through it, to walk any of the council members or the mayor through it whenever they want to come see what we're doing there.
We'd love to. I'm not speaking for them, but, but anyway, yeah, we would appreciate the opportunity so that people can really realize. But just as short, even though you pulled out, I just want some clarification. I mean, I don't even know if it was proper about the, the gym aspect was proposed that it wasn't for public. And I've known a lot of different R and D projects that did have it for the public, so.
Yeah, if you, if you were to go to the Blue Towers, the gym there, you can purchase a membership for. It sort of depends. I mean, you know, Mr. McLennan worked with Genentech. They have a massive campus. They're quite a bit different than the companies we work with. Our tend to be multi-tenant, so it's not, you don't have one company like a Genentech controlling the gym. And therefore, we have to create the same environment a public facing gym has. It'll have staff, it'll have membership, it'll have ID cards. And so it's very easy for us to open that to the public as well. So, you know, I think if you were to go to that gym, there'll be a gym in Brisbane that's public as well as in our portfolio. So, so there is a way to do it. I think you'll see that we're going to end up with probably about ten companies in the project down the street. And so because it's not just one company that controls the space, it allows us to do that public tracing gym.
Yeah, because I, I knew it was a little bit differently designed than my fellow colleagues over in South City had explained when they, that this one was, could be designed for the public. So thank you very much for that and, and definitely keep us in mind. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Garrity. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Garrity, I just wanted to say thank you for being here and letting us know, unfortunately, what happened and as mentioned, please continue to work with our economic workforce development division. And yeah, we, we know that maybe there may be other things in the horizon. I mean, we know that Daly City is pretty dense already, but there are opportunities. I think if there were more creative ways of thinking about the land that we have that's left within Daly City to develop. And so you never know how the economy turns and where those possibilities are as far as land opportunities. So I wish you the best of luck and we'll take the opportunity to also see what you all have done in regards to the, the project. So thank you very much.
And I, I'd like counsel to know staff's been great to work with. We, we've gone to a lot of cities where research and development isn't a common thing and there's certainly a learning curve. And we've had a fantastic experience working alongside staff. So the city should be commended for that. I think that's really important, especially to these companies that their real estate right after their people is just as important to them.
Yeah.
All right, with that, I think, I know Bob asked for some more time at the end and, and, you know, I, I thought both the presentations were great. And I would say, you know, we are a bigger company and we do come from the south, but a lot of what he said about community resonates with us. We're still a small company at the end of the day and a relatively small team. And so that's one of the things we really liked about, about Daly City. So thank you guys so much. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garrity. I guess this is where we ask, Tatum, I think I need some guidance here. Is this where we ask questions or?
I, I think this is where McLennan had suggested that we get a final two minute wrap up from each developer, but in reverse order. So obviously, Phase Three has indicated that they're withdrawing. So we could take a two minute wrap up statement from George Lamb and then we could do a two minute wrap up from McLennan.
Okay. Thank you, Tatum. Again, Albert Costa, agent for LF George. Well, thanks for having us in terms of, in terms of what we just wanted to point out, which is the obvious is that our proposed project was a a non-hotel project, all residential with, with community benefits of a ground floor retail and the residential components above and rooftop activity center. And we're very excited about this project. And again, we like Daly City and we like working with staff. Gerald, anything from your side?
Well, I don't hear Gerald piping in, but I just want to thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, city council members, very much for our opportunity to speak with you and, and to have this proposed project in front of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Costa. Thank you, Mr. Lamb. Thank you, Mr. Green. I'll pass it over to Mr. McLennan for your closing remarks.
Yes, hello. So I'd just like to wrap up with, you know, I, I laugh here with my thoughts of when I met with Tatum, I think ten years ago, when we submitted our proposal and that it was going to be a hotel only site. You know, I was, I was disappointed. And, you know, we're, we're, we're at it again. And I can just tell the council, I want this site developed, right? I, I have witnessed the, you know, all of the other proposals over the past years. You know, we came up with a deposit just to show that we're serious, right? And, and we're getting a ten month window and I will abide by that if, if we're chosen. So you know, it's, it's a, it's a crazy environment right now. And, but we can make it work with the, with the different components that we have with this site. It's designed for a tough environment. And so the active part, the, the different components to, to keep it lively. You know, the revenue that we're going to provide to the city. You know, based on, you know, this convention center, the, the event center, I think is going to be a is, is going to be a real fun winner for the daily, for, for the city of Daly City. So I'm excited with that. So in wrap up, you know, I, I, I hope we're chosen. I hope we, we get the chance to work with, with staff and council and we're going to give it our best shot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLennan. I just want to thank all the applicants for coming to Brew and spending their precious time with us over the past couple of hours. Thank you to Ken for putting together an awesome packet that would be very accessible for, for, for all of us. I guess I just leave it up to everybody else. Y'all have any last words, my counsel? Go ahead, Councilmember DeJivani.
I just wanted to ask, are we allowed to ask ECD and Ken a question, right? As well, because based on the volatile revenue, not, not, nothing is because, you know, we, we get most of our revenue obviously from property tax, right, Ken? Here in Daly City. So with the volatility and some of the numbers are based on certain things that haven't happened, right? Which is natural projections, right? So what can we really, from each project? Like, what are the hard numbers of revenue that we can really rely on? Based on the current economic conditions?
Councilwoman DeJivani, I can try to answer that. It is true that it's hard to predict exact revenue projections, okay? But if you look at each of these three projects, the nature of the revenues that were going to be generated, each had property tax behind it. So if you had a hundred million dollar project, you would get the share of property tax from that assessed value for all three projects. Say they were all the same value. On the residential, you clearly aren't getting TOT. You know, it's not a hotel land use. And so from the hotel, mixed hotel project, which is McLennan, you will get TOT. If, if a hotel's built, you'll get transient occupancy tax on top of the property tax. So right in and of itself, as long as that hotel's built along, along with a mix, whether that's a million, three or some number that's lesser because of occupancy, which will be volatile, you're going to get some hotel revenue. In the case of, and there's more commitments on the part of McLennan to other revenue components. And so those will need to be negotiated, if you will, in a development agreement. But on the Phase Three project, you clearly didn't have a hotel that was included, but the proposal on the part of Phase Three was I'll match or I'll try to create an equivalency of TOT and give the city a million dollars a year, again, negotiated vis a vis a development agreement, which would come out of their cash flow. So it is hard to predict the exact numbers, but as you look at where the city could make the ongoing revenue stream at the highest of levels. You know, if a hotel component is included, it's, it's in addition to property tax. Now, we've also talked a lot about hotels are hard to build. So I think it is important to understand, is there really a market? You know, for hospitality, because it's been a challenge, obviously, in the past, as recognized by Mr. McLennan.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Ken. Thank you, Mayor.
Are there any other comments, questions from my colleagues? Or any other comments, questions from the staff? Oh, I see. Vice Mayor, I'm sure you, I know you unmuted. Go right ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I still have questions from now we're going to both developers. So, I mean, let me just throw out some of them. So let me just start with the first one, the McLennan project. So I, I, well, let me also say I see benefits of both projects, the George Lamb project and the McLennan project. But just to start the conversation. You know, we started this because we wanted revenue. That was the bottom line and the decision was made to do a hotel. Now, understanding that was a different time in history where hotels were really considered, you know, the premier marketing, commercial, revenue generating resources. So so then I guess my question is, do we stay with that notion? And do we stick to it? Or do we, should we be flexible in allowing someone like the George Lamb development to proceed? And then it, so for me, it comes down to does the central question still exist, which is how much revenue are we going to get? And what, and what is that going to look like for Daly City? So I have questions about the, the numbers for both sides. I, I, so with respect to the McLennan site, what ringed, what concerned me was the issue of the volatility of the hotel business. So am I comfortable with that projection based on the volatility? Not one hundred percent. So that sort of deflates the, the, the projections on that side. With the George Lamb site, there, there, there doesn't seem to be that, you know, set revenue stream that we can identify. And I would like a little bit more, I don't know, evidence is the right word, but I'd like a little bit more corroboration or a little bit more of a foundation as to how I'm going to be comfortable with the number that I'm going to be assuming they're going to make for your Daly City every year. And then structurally, going back to the McLennan site, although I like the idea of an, an event center, I can see huge parking problems with an event center, a hotel, residence, gym, all in that one location. So I have concerns about that. And then I have concerns about the event center in terms of the control that we, we can have. For example, we have prohibited raves from occurring at the Cow Palace. I absolutely think that should be another issue that we should be able to protect and not have raves at the Cow Palace, at, at this event center. But I, I would, I would have liked to have heard more of, of community nonprofit opportunities for that event center to be used. So that's the, the question on that. And then on the, the, the George Lamb property, I can see how creating a, a sort of new space in Daly City where it would sort of be where you're going to have more people because of the residence. And you, you have that theater right there and you have that shopping center right there. So that could be a huge, almost a downtown, the start of a downtown. And that feel of people constantly moving through, generating income, taxes, all of that. So I could see how the numbers could go up for them. So, I could see how the numbers could go up for them, but I just need to see concretely what they are. And so, I guess my thought is that we're down to two. I think we should continue to have this discussion for the two until we get more answers to those questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. But, council member, DeJavani.
Yeah, just on what Vice Mayor said, he's right. And then we have to also consider that people that are residents and stuff, do they really have the disposable income to venture out and, and spend, or they spending the money, right, during these times? So, yeah, I think that more hard numbers, more information, as Mr. Buena Ventura. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Council member, Manala.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, yeah, now that we're in kind of two applicants and contenders at this time, I think, for me, seeing this project or this actually location be empty for quite some time, I think for, for me, it would be helpful to really understand and see that upon approvals, how fast and, and how dedicated, you know, as far as seeing, this can be entitled, but then, you know, I, I would like to really understand, like, the feasibility and plan of execution towards, you know, either of the projects. Because, you know, I, I've grown up in Daily City, that, that is actually, like, I've walked by it many times and unfortunately, through many renditions of entitlements, we're at this place now, which also could be a wonderful opportunity, right? So, I'm an optimist. But I'm also seeing this come to our table once again. I feel like it's important to understand that, like, I'd like, I mean, we're obviously, we've seen more, you know, updated renderings and studies, but I think it's important to see kind of really the reality of the next steps around, you know, the, the envision or plan on the timeline. I see that, you know, we got the term sheets, but that's, that's where I'm at. I mean, we're, we're in a, I think, there's more questions to be answered. I think I'm in alignment with the council mem, I mean, Vice Mayor, Buena Ventura, around also, these are very large projects right there in what they consider old Daily City. And so, yeah, what are the community benefits? I've talked about local hire, but also, you know, what can be given back to kind of the local community, whether, and what type of support is that for the residents and those that have, have been the fabric of that neighborhood for a lot, for quite some time? So, I mean, that I haven't heard yet, but I'm sure that down the line, we can hear, hear more from both applicants. Thank you.
Thank you, Evelyn. Council member, Glenn Sylvester.
Okay, let me see. Okay, there we go. All right. First of all, I'd like to thank both presenters, matter of fact, all presenters here today. And as you all know, this is dynamic and it's fluid, it's ever-changing. And to the presenters, they've tried to adjust to the changing conditions, which is very, very much appreciated. It sounds like, from what I've heard today, they're willing to try to make this work. So, in looking at both presentations, boy, how much I would like to have that top floor, that, the 10th floor of one of those buildings. From what I've heard, the third floor, you'd be able to see. And why was that statement made? I think, to the credit of the Lamb project, that I, whoever made the statement about being able to look out and seeing the ocean, I think that poses a question. And the question came into my mind, well, who's going to look at the ocean? If it's a hotel, we're looking at transient occupancy and they'll come in, utilize a space for a day, two days, or week. But if it's a residence, they'll see this every day. And as the Vice Mayor alluded, I'm looking at the community. And in between the lines, it's the community that's going to stand to benefit. Daily City will grow, will have more people. And to the detriment of the Lamb, Lamb project, we don't have estimated retail. It's been said that there will be retail on the bottom. So, in addition to the movies, the pizza shops, the ice cream shops, what sort of retail will be down at the bottom? And who will utilize the retail? And if you ask me, I think if it was a hotel, it would probably be less used than opposed to a community who actually live there. And I think there might be some additional resources such as transit-oriented development that might be available, especially if it's residence. I think it will assist with our RENA numbers that we, that we always hear about. But I think we don't have all the figures yet, if it was a residence, with retail in the bottom. So, I would look forward to getting that information. Now, I'm going to be frank and, again, I learned this evening through the, the Vice Mayor and to which was revealed to us that the previous Planet Fitness now existing further down the block will be moved to, to this new location. And that brings about additional concerns, and, and I'm really taking this to heart, parking. Where are all the folks going to park? I believe the Lamb project was talking about going underground, underground project? Whoa, that costs more money. And, but how will we address the parking for hotel guests, daily residents who live there, although a few? If you have an event, is 600 parking spots enough? So, what I'm looking in totality is the future of Daily City and the future of our community in being able to live and work in Daily City. So, until I get further information, which I would like more information, as such as estimated revenue, those are my comments at this time. And I thank you.
Thank you, council member Sylvester. Council member, DeJavani. I know that we're coming down to the last second, so if you can keep your comments brief.
Yes, 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 Mayor. One of the things is, I wanted to make sure that, I would like to, between this time and the next time, find out what is the result of the, the both parties meeting with the Samhain Taylor Labor Building and Trades with BART and the Carpenters 217 and the Samhain Taylor Labor Council? What would be the result of their meeting? And see what they can come to with maybe a community workforce agreement, which is a benefit. It does hire local, it does keep the revenue in our city, because those people will purchase and they are residents in our city. And they, people don't have disposable income, not unless they have those type of wages. People do not, can just not go and spend at retail stores anymore, not unless it's really discounted, like, down the street at Westlake. How much competition is that for the retail part? So, they would have to really think through and see what would be a draw there. But that's one of my considerations. And I noticed that on the staff report, I want to thank the staff for doing it, and city attorney as well, that they did have that down as possible a part of the terms on number 11. So, I would like to see if that would be viable for that. But that, thank you, Mayor, for recognizing me and giving me the time. And thank you to the staff and everyone that presented. Thank you.
So, I guess, Tatum, next steps, and I'll probably conclude.
I'm sort of throwing out ideas as we go. It, it sounds like there's a considerable amount of questions from the council and I, I do think they're very thoughtful questions. And I know there's been frustration about how long it's taken to develop this site. And I know that there's a goal of it being a revenue-generating development at this site, and we want to fact-check that as well. But of course, as we know, it only generates if it's built. And so, it sounds like there's maybe some basic questions of overall project feasibility. And I can maybe, like, lean on Ken here, but I think we have presented what the development teams have presented. And I don't know if there's an independent analysis that you want to answer some of your questions, or if you are asking for additional information from the development teams. But in, in my mind, I am hearing that there might be some useful analysis from maybe a, a third party to look at the proposals, look at the, the volatile market. One of the big parts of development feasibility right now is construction costs. Ken can tell you the construction cost increases that have occurred over the past year and the past two years. And so, that is definitely changing the feasibility of development. So, if we want to look at it through that lens, we may need to, to look at it independently at the proposals that have been submitted. Also, given the volatility of the market, some of the proposals that have been submitted tonight, maybe they would have to change to be responsive to that. So, Ken, I don't know if you want to provide some of your expertise on what you think the council's been asking and how we go about approaching answering those questions?
One thing I heard was just a, a better calculation, if you will, or an analysis of the ongoing revenues. And to the extent that we actually estimated property tax for the LF George project, that to the extent there's going to be retail or commercial on the bottom floor, we can also further estimate, you know, sort of a sales tax revenue generation from that, using some assumptions. So, maybe that would complete the picture. And I think McLennan has provided several line items of different revenue streams, but maybe there's just a side-by-side comparison that's more quantitative that would offer a projected annual revenue stream. And perhaps the developers can confirm that. I don't want to do that. We can do it independently, but I'd like to make sure that, personally, I'd like to make sure the developers agree, hey, this is what we've come up with, if you want us to do that kind of an analysis. I don't think it's hard to do, but there are assumptions that will go into it. In other words, you know, it's never a guarantee as to what the revenues are going to be. Project costs will dictate property tax. Sales, you know, retailers will dictate sales tax revenue and how well they perform. Hotel will be dictated by occupancy and different rates. So, those variables are all market-driven, but I think we could probably put together a more quantitative analysis to compare the two projects. And then that might be enlightening for the council.
If that is something that the council desires, then I, I don't think the July 25 meeting date would be, I don't think we'd be able to meet that date. So, if that's something that the council's requesting, we can certainly begin working on that. And I think Ken made a good point. I don't think we would do any of this without inputs from the development teams. We're not going to make up numbers that the teams don't also agree and support. But if we go that route, then it will not be on the July 25 agenda. July 25 was sort of the hopeful, you guys do the interviews tonight, you hear everything you need and you're ready to go. But if you're not, you know, I appreciate the council being very thoughtful on this. This is a great opportunity site and we want to make sure we get the best development possible. And the questions you raised are right on. So, if we were to do something on the side, I don't know, I, I believe there's no council meetings in August, so that gives us plenty of time to put our news to the front desk and get to work. And hopefully, one of the meetings in September, we can come back for additional information and developers' questions.
I'm okay with that. It gives time to get more information down and what our council's requesting.
I agree, Mayor.
Okay. It looks like a general consensus. All right. I guess with that, I just want to say thank you to the staff and thank you to all of our applicants for putting this all together and spending this evening, you know, deciding on a very critical choice in the matter of our future in Daily City. So, thank you, everyone, and everybody have a good night.
All right.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.